Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Fairmont Area School Board meeting this Tuesday, July 12, 2016. For roll call, all members are present. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to minutes. You have the minutes before you.
I've read the minutes and I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 14th meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. For the agenda this evening, we have, do we have one change?
One addition.
Or addition?
Roman numeral ten, BF.
Okay, yeah. Roman numeral ten, under personnel, BF for media technicians. We're adding to the agenda. Any other changes?
No. I will offer a motion to approve the agenda, the new and improved agenda.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. We have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We have no celebrations or school transfers. First off, we'll look at the top of that sheet where we have our expenditure report. So then on the left, you have the different funds, and then we have our 2015-16 final budget. We have our monthly expenditures for June of 2016 and our year-to-date expenditures. So keep in mind that our school year isn't, you know, the date is past, but we're still paying a lot of bills for last year, and so that this in no means is a complete end-of-fiscal year expenditure list. And then on the bottom, we have our wires and transfers. That should not have the word April there. That should just be June 10 through July 7. And the first couple ones, we have rev-track expenses from the prior month. We received our Pathways Early Learning Scholarship Program revenues. We have our revenue share from the Commerce Bank. And then everything else goes into the payroll area. All the wires for the June payroll and then some of the fringes for the July payroll that we pay out early in July. Our total payroll dispersments for the month of June were $1,364,000. Do you have any questions? Okay. Then we had one single check in June, and it was to teachers on call. And it was just kind of a timing thing. We wanted to make sure we avoided a financial charge, so we did do a single check there. And then we have our check register dated June 28. And without having the board meeting, what we do there is Nikki and Accounts Payable will still process our payments. And then Julie came in on June 27, and Julie and I reviewed the check register so we could mail out payments in a timely manner. Just a couple to bring to your attention there. Check number 58-592 made out to Martin Luther High School. Martin Luther High School and St. James Lutheran in Northrop, this year both have applied for equity aid. And Fairmont Schools also applies for equity aid. And what the Minnesota Department of Education did is they give us our equity aid, but we're a member of Socrates. So we actually received a credit on our Socrates bill for the equity aid for Martin Luther High School and St. James Lutheran. So then we needed to cut each of those schools a check. So here's the check for Martin Luther, and then the one for St. James Lutheran is a little bit further in the register. A couple down from the Martin Luther check is MHS Speech Boosters. That's Marshall High School Speech Boosters. And for National Speech, our student and coach traveled with Marshall Schools. So they made some of the arrangements for the airfare and the lodging, and we're paying them our share. Check number 58-615 is the payment to St. James Lutheran for that equity aid. And then the very last payment you have on your register is the payment to US Bank. And it's in form of a wire, so you do not have a check number. And as you recall, when we did our bond sale, we received a good faith check right away. So that was $119,000. So then what we're doing here is we're putting this amount, this good faith check amount of $119,000 into the escrow account. So we needed to wire the money to the US Bank. Any questions? All right. Then we'll move to the registers dated July 12. And you do have two registers. We're at that time of year that FY16 ended on June 30, but we're still paying bills for that fiscal year and the new fiscal year. So the register that starts with Hilliard/Sue Falls, that's for the 15-16 school year. So I just have a few checks there to bring to your attention. Check number 58-647 made out to Herb Jones. This is for our diploma covers and inserts for graduation. The one right below that is made out to Higher Image, and that's who we're now using for our background checks. And then check number 58-667 made out to Southern Plains. This payment to Southern Plains is for our targeted services for the 15-16 school year. So it was the summer school last summer because it was after July 1, and also our school year targeted services. And then our early childhood screening. Southern Plains coordinates that, and then they bill out the member districts for their share. So that's a payment for all three of those things. Any questions on that register? Okay, then we'll move to the register dated today, July 12. That starts with US Bank. So that's for the 16-17 school year. That first payment to US Bank is for our bond payments, and so that money will actually be wired out. We make payments twice a year on our bonds. Then check number 58-671 made out to Central Minnesota Educational Research and Development Council. This is for our Viewpoint software and data services, and that's for the 16-17 school year. And Viewpoint is where we house all of our student demographic and testing data. So it's mainly used in the testing area where we track growth and progress of our students. And then check number 58-676 made out to our schools today. This is for our website portal, our facility scheduler, the community calendar scheduler. So this is the total cost, and then the Chamber, City of Fairmont, and the Visitors and Convention Bureau pay a portion of the community calendar, and then we invoice them out for that. That is all I had for you. Julie and I did meet prior to the board meeting to review all of the registers and wire transfers and balances and such. Do you have any questions?
If there are no questions, I would offer a motion to approve the June 2016 Treasuries Report, single checks, wire transfers for June 10, 2016, to July 7, 2016, and the June 28 and the July 12, 2016 bills.
Thank you. Julie, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. We have a motion and a second to approve the financial reports and bills. Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There is no old business, so moving on to new business. We have some organizational items. Annually, the board needs to approve a number of organizational items, and there are no recommendations for change from the last year. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the following items for the 2016-17 school year. Number one, designate the second and fourth Tuesday of each month as regularly scheduled school board meetings to be held at 5:00 PM at City Hall. Number two, designate the following banks as depositories of school funds and authorize the superintendent and business manager to sign release agreements for pledged securities for collateral purposes and initiate and approve electronic fund transfers. US Bank Fairmont, Profinium Financial, First Farmers and Merchants Bank Fairmont, Bank Midwest Fairmont, State Bank Celon, Wells Federal Bank Fairmont, US Bank Minneapolis, Wells Fargo Mankato, State Bank Fairmont. Number three, set compensation for school board members at $1,800 and $2,400 for school board president. Compensation for each additional meeting pertaining to school board matters is set at $25 for a partial day and $70 for a full day. Number four, designate the Fairmont Sentinel as the official newspaper for Independent School District 2752. Number five, designate Matt Mahoney as Title IX Compliance Officer, Human Rights Officer for Independent School District 2752. Number seven, six, designate Sue Nelson as District Transportation Safety Director. Number seven, designate Kim Niss as 504 Coordinator. Number eight, designate Jim Davison as Federal Programs Administrator as provided under Public Law 107 to 110. Number nine, designate Joseph Brown, Sr., as Homeschool Coordinator. Number 10, designate Nancy Backer as the Homeless Student Liaison. Number 11, designate Sue Nelson as HIPAA Compliance Officer. Number 12, designate Tyler Garrison as the Health and Safety Coordinator. Number 13, set the stipend for extra duty pay at $30 per event. Number 14, authorize payment of bills between board meetings for the purpose of obtaining a discount or required prepayment on an order or to avoid penalty charges. The district is also authorized to pay board bills in the event a board meeting is not held. The superintendent and business manager are authorized to approve the processing of payments for invoices submitted under contracts approved by the board and under circumstances when it is deemed necessary and appropriate to proceed with the payment. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Rufus. Any discussion?
Could you repeat that all, please?
No.
Okay.
Denied. All right. If there's no further discussion, we'll move for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to long-term facilities maintenance. Julie?
Yes. In your package, you have Appendix A, and part of that is, we did already at June, the June 14 board meeting, we approved our 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan. So some of this will be familiar to you. And in the past, we'd only needed board action on that, on this every other year. However, the rules have changed, and now annual board action is required. So MDE has sent instructions on the new rules for adopting this long-term facilities maintenance plan. And so in order for us to continue on, we need to add that long-term facilities maintenance plan along with revenue and the statement of assurances, which is all and part of Appendix A. And so this was reviewed by the Operations Committee this afternoon. And so with that, I would make a motion to approve the following documents related to long-term facilities maintenance plan, the statement of assurance, the 10-year revenue projection, and the 10-year expenditure projection.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to student staff photos and ID badges. Dan?
The photography contract that we'd had with Lifetouch expired at the end of the 2015-16 school year. The district went through the process of requesting three-year proposals for this service, and we did receive only one proposal in return, which was from our previous vendor, Lifetouch. They handle both the photo and the ID badge processes at the school. The, we're recommending entering into another three-year contract with Lifetouch 2016-17, 17-18, and 18-19 school years, which is in Appendix B, which shows the cost of the different packages that are offered to the students and any other things. One thing that is in this contract that was not in the previous one is the return of a 20% commission back on all packages, which will be coming back to the school district, which had not been in this. So that will be an improvement for the district as far as that. So they handle all the photo ID equipment and then the pictures and the memory books and such for the, for the students. So I'll make a motion to approve the three-year contract with Lifetouch for the 16-17, 17-18, and 18-19 school years.
Thank you. Dan, is there a second?
Question? So the 20% commission, that's new to this contract?
Mm-hmm.
And that's on the, the packages that the parents purchase, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'd heard over the year from a number of parents that they weren't very happy with the quality of the photos. And in fact, they didn't, they didn't purchase the packages offered by Lifetouch. They, they went to Roger Carlson, and then I'm talking about, you know, maybe 500 people, families that, you know, that weren't happy with the, you know, with the quality of the Lifetouch product. And so with the, you know, 20% commission, that, you know, that's lost revenue to the, you know, to the district. So is there any, is there any stipulation in the contract regarding quality? I mean, if this is a three-year contract, if we're not happy with, you know, the product, you know, what, you know, do we have recourse? Or do we have, I mean, is there, is there any way to, you know, to get them to respond to, you know, any potential concerns?
You know, I've been working with Lifetouch for 20 years, and they're a Minnesota-based company. I've never actually had any complaints about the quality. When Lifetouch was chosen three years ago as the vendor, there was a local vendor that had the contract for many years before that. And I think there were some people, I don't, I never heard that there was a quality issue. I heard that there were some people that preferred to just go to a local vendor, even though the local vendor took the pictures, and the pictures were processed out of state. Lifetouch processes, you know, they take the photos and process them in-state. They're a Minnesota-based corporation. And, but I never heard anything about quality. I heard the biggest concern was that we, that a local person lost the contract, and therefore they were going to continue. But I know Mr. Carlson has acknowledged that he's out of the photography business, and he's retired from that, so.
But even after he, you know, did not get the contract the last round of bids, you know, he was, he can continue to offer the service, and I believe he's going to continue to do that in the future. So I just want to make sure, and I can vouch for the quality because, you know, even on our, my children, you know, I wasn't impressed. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, that, you know, that Lifetouch is aware that, you know, that we are, we do expect a certain level of quality.
Sure.
You know, at least comparable to what, you know, we previously had.
Well, I would hope that if anybody did have, you know, comments about the quality, they would come back so that we would have some, you know, information based on that or, you know, but, you know, I, I don't know what you mean by quality versus was, you know, the kid's hair different from when they left in the morning, because we all know how active kids are. I mean, I don't, I don't know, because I don't have any children. But, but I would hope that those who had problems with the quality would make it known so those things could be followed up with. Because those things have to play in when we, we make a contract.
Right. And, and, you know, and I heard, I mean, they made, their concerns made known to me, and, you know, and I just, I wasn't aware that this was even up for discussion. So I just wanted to bring it forward that, you know, that in the past, you know, that there have been questions of quality and...
But you received your board packet before tonight, correct?
But I wasn't part of, you know, any discussions.
The discussion, okay.
The, I would say this, Rufus, that in the future, if anybody has a, you know, they guarantee their product. And if someone does not like the product, they will replace it or not charge for it. And I would suggest that if anybody uses a service and doesn't like the product, to contact me, and I can put them in contact with the Lifetouch people because I have found them to be, over the 20 years that I've worked with them, I've found them to be very, very responsive.
Well, I think that's, I think that's great for parents to know that, you know, they can, you know, contact the district and...
Yep.
I certainly think it would be better for everyone if we did have local vendors that would have at least given us back a proposal or whatnot as far as the cost went. When I, when I think back about this, when the contract was approved with Lifetouch three years ago, I actually voted against it at that time because I prefer to keep the business a local and in-town here. In this case, we did not get any, did not get any proposals from, from anybody else.
My understanding was that you had sent out three requests for proposals, but only one had returned that with an interest of providing that service.
That is correct. We had two regional photographers that did contact us. They did request an RFP, and we did send them a copy of the RFP, and those two folks chose not to respond. So...
Is, are the, the team photos, is that a whole different?
Yeah, the team photos were done by a local photographer. That's done by Steven Seifert. And he actually has a multi-year contract. I think we signed about a, I think it was a four or five-year contract for him to do the team photos and the individual photos of our student athletes.
Okay.
So that is all done locally.
He, I know he's offering school photos this year.
Oh, okay.
Like, because Roger is officially done and has sold his studio, and I know he is kind of taking that over. And kind of one of my questions was what, do we know how many people actually buy photos from Lifetouch when they have pictures? Do we know that, I mean, like you said, there's like, it's a lot that went to go to Carl's. Is it worth...
But if I remember right, I think when, when Mr. Carlson did do those, I think he did rebate some of that money back too, if I may, if I, if I remember right. I may not remember correctly, but...
He did, I think it was a 10% rebate. He did do a rebate. And so when we sent out the RFP this year, we requested a 20% rebate. So we'll know exactly not only how many people, but how much people produced, because we'll get 20% of that total. And that money will be dispersed. We use that in the past for some of the clubs and organizations of the high school that don't have the ability to raise funds. So...
I think the most beneficial part of the Lifetouch service is the IDs, and they provide the, the equipment for the photo IDs and the printers and such. That's at no additional cost to the district. That's been the one thing that I've been pleased with, with that. For my kids' pictures, I've used, I've bought a package from them. We've had, we had to do a retake. I think we, we had one year where we did a reshoot.
Well, I, I think we should just, you know, keep track, you know, because, because parents are going to vote with their pocketbook, and they're going to, they're going to go to who has the service, whether it's, you know, Seifert or Carlson or, or Lifetouch. And so, you know, we would hope that, that, you know, that we're offering a service that parents are happy with.
And essentially, it's the only service that is available from our school because it's the only
Correct.
person or group that's contracted or been willing to contract, so.
So what happens to those students in the, if they don't get their pictures taken? Or do they all get taken with Lifetouch? And, I mean, do their pictures then go into the annual, the yearbook?
They do. All students get their photos taken through Lifetouch, whether they purchase a package or not. And they have a choice when they go through the line to check whether they want to purchase a package or they decline to purchase a package. But then that photo that is taken then is updated into our database, and that's what we print our student IDs and our staff IDs for. And that photo is the one that goes into the yearbook.
Okay.
I'm done.
Very good. Thank you.
I, I think we need a second, actually. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D, senior citizen passes. Danielle?
Yes. There was a question at a previous board meeting as to what was considered the age for senior citizens on the season passes for activities. In looking back at minutes, the senior citizen age was 65-plus. However, we've since learned that the high school has been selling to the community from, to members at age 60. So we recommend that we continue with that and have board action approving the senior age of 60-plus.
Thank you, Danielle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. We'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Personnel. Rufus?
Jim Davidson and Michelle Rosen are recommending that Jamie Naraki be hired as the elementary media technician. She is a graduate of Martin Luther High School and Iowa Lakes Community College. For the past ten years, she has served as a childcare provider. So I would make a motion to approve the employment of Jamie Naraki as a media technician effective August twenty-nine, two thousand and sixteen at a salary of step one.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the second, Kim Niss is recommending that Loretta Moller be hired as an ASA one to replace Harriet Luns, who retired this year. Loretta has experience working in the district, has both a daily and long-term ASA substitute and has served as a test monitor. I would make a motion to approve the employment of Loretta Moller as an ASA one effective July eighteen, two thousand and sixteen at a salary of step two.
Thank you, Rufus. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. We have a motion by Rufus, a second by Dan. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, Lori Higgins, who had that position that Loretta Moller is going to take now, she is moving to replace Harriet Luns.
So Loretta's moving to replace Lori Higgins.
That's correct. So the motion's still the same, though?
Right.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Any further, yep, Dan, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Contract settlements. Julie?
Yes, we have come to terms with some of our bargaining groups and have settled those contracts. First group, the Administrative Support Assistance, the Technology Specialist, Bus Driver, C.R. Director, C.R. Secretary, Facility Schedular, and also the Media Technician. And you'll see those as listed in Appendix C as to what their salary increased, which was negotiated. Also, if there was a change in the district contribution for health and hospitalization, that was increased for most of these contracts from four dollars and thirty cents an hour to four dollars and fifty cents an hour for the seventeen, eighteen school year. And then some, like now the Administrative Support Assistance, they've got healthcare savings planned, sick labor reimbursement that was increased from ninety-five dollars a day to an amount equal to daily substitute teacher pay. And also for the C.R. Secretary and then also for the Media Technician. So I will then make a motion to approve the contract settlements for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school years for the following groups. Administrative Support Assistance, the Technology Specialist, Bus Driver, C.R. Director, C.R. Secretary, Facility Schedular, and the Media Technicians.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. We have a motion by Julie, a second by Rufus, to approve the employee contract settlements in Appendix C. Any discussion?
I do want to clarify, though, that Sue did a lot of these, wasn't, she did a lot of the. I was on the committee that did the Administrative Supports Assistance, but Sue did, Sue did most of those others then, the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Sue.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Board committee reports. Julie, ASA negotiations?
Yeah, this will be kind of easy because we did come to a contract settlement there. And all, both sides were happy with the settlement. I'll just go right on, do the CMP negotiations. That's the next on the list. And we did meet, well, Superintendent Brown was on vacation. Sue and I did meet. We received information from them. We had met previously just for kind of an organizational meeting, and then this one was more of the full negotiation staff from the custodial group. And we had just taken their offers and their, or their ideas and stuff into consideration, and then we will plan to have another meeting in the near future.
Thank you, Julie. Operations Committee meeting. Dan?
We met earlier this afternoon, just before the meeting. We continued with discussions about the possibility of adding a dance team to Fairmont High School. We had updated budget information. There are just a couple more questions, a couple more things that we're going to cover with that before bringing it to the board. We talked about the, a couple of the things we just had here in the meeting, the photography agreement. We did get a review, a list of all different fundraisers that different school groups did over the past year. And some of them are very, I should say, they're very fruitful. Yeah, they're very efficient as far as the fundraising that they do. We kind of keep track of that just to make sure that groups aren't going and selling the same things at the same times or it's just kind of a nice to review to see who's getting, taking care of with those. We talked a little bit, there's going to be an adjustment in the roofing project that we have previously approved, just some roof repair at the high school. And it had been mapped out in a plan over the past, well, over the coming five or six years. They did do a preliminary look at the roof and saw that a couple of the areas were in a little bit worse off shape than they thought they might have been, and others were better. So it was decided that, and we don't really need to make an adjustment budget-wise on this because it's basically this amount of square footage. It's just doing the roofing, which will actually start here shortly, over portions of the high school. One part that was going to be done this year was over the commons, but that is going to go off till next year because there might need to be a little more thorough work done on that area. And then also, there were a couple of spots in the industrial wing that were in a little bit worse shape than anticipated. However, lots of the other areas were looking A-OK. So just as, just informed of a slight update on that. We covered the long-term maintenance documentation that was in the meeting, the custodial contract. We discussed the different options there and personnel, and I know staff welfare will be involved in that as well. Talked about the negotiations with the different groups. We talked about the compensation for the robotics advisor. We may be able to take some things that have been budgeted for other activities that are no longer done at the high school and use that to add to the robotics advisor position. Because we discovered through a little research that we weren't compensating them nearly as well as other schools in our conference that have a robotics program. And just briefly looked at operations levy possibly this fall. And then we also discussed the kindergarten pilot program a little bit at the end of the meeting too. So we covered a lot in a fairly short amount of time.
Thank you. Any questions for Dan or others on the operation committee? Okay. Take a motion to adjourn if there's no other discussion.
For as long as that agenda is. I was surprised that we're done so quickly.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Rufus. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dan, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the school board meeting at five thirty-four P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Hey, Julie. You're my man.